Okay, so we'll get started and Jim can join us when he gets done. First thing that I, on the agenda today is the discussion of the replacement of the barn at the fairgrounds. Initially, initially on this, we were asked to put some money up to get the barn, the barn needs to be manufactured, so we need to get that going now so that it's up by the time of CNFR. However, we're looking at it, we didn't think the RFP was followed, but I see you just sent an email, Charmaine?
I, I did send an email on the process that the fairgrounds followed, but in reconsidering the process, I'm not certain that the county distributed its procurement policy to the fairgrounds and the other, like the library, the health board. And so, I don't know that it's reasonable to hold the fairgrounds to that policy if it wasn't properly given to them. Plus, it's my understanding that the lowest bidder also has done some preliminary work or did some previous work, so that's a reason to choose them. And then, just for expediency, it's my understanding they have to get started right away to have the facilities in time. So with those three reasons, I think it's reasonable to go with what the fairgrounds has done.
Okay, I guess I would have a question then. Do we, like, this is a good classic example, would it be up to the commission to do the RFP to get the bids for something like this? Or do we rely back on, like, the fair board, or if this was an airport project, the airport board? Do we rely on them to get the RFPs, put them out? How's that work?
So currently, I think each entity does its own thing, but it might be good to consider whether the commissioners want to distribute their procurement policy, whatever it may be, to those entities and say, you know, if you want commissioner money, we want you to follow our policy. But that hasn't happened, to my knowledge.
Okay, and what you're seeing here that was sent to you, even though they may or may not have what our procurement policy is, they did put an RFP out, they got three bids, and we would be okay in moving forward on the lowest bid?
I, I think it'd be reasonable to move forward. They didn't do an RFP, they just called three vendors. And, and so, really what, what the county has is between 10 and 50, I think it is. The informal process is for the county to call three, at least three vendors. So, this is over that amount, so our policy would require the RFP. But, our policy doesn't necessarily apply to them at this point.
I have a question.
Dela?
What's the statute say about this?
I don't think the statute would weigh in past what we're already doing, but since it's a, I guess it's a capital project, I'd want to confirm that. And I think I might-
Yeah, I would want to know what that says, Charmaine, because the way I read some of these statutes, there are certain things that are not waivable. And one of them is how we spend money. And one of, and this issue with picking, just deciding you're going to pick three different bidders without opening it up to the public is really a problem. Because that's how your brother-in-law gets the jobs, you know? That's why they passed the statute. They don't want any brother-in-laws getting the job unless they put it out to everybody.
So, for the counties, there, there is no restriction unless it's a capital construction project? And then there's some exceptions. So, I think I have what I need to look at, look that up right now.
Mr. Chairman, while Charmaine is doing that and then going to come back to Commissioner Laird, I know that the library is, and has in the past, and the health department too, is looking for the assistance of the county attorney for these RFPs. And I don't think it'd be a bad idea to get together, at least informally with, and get some feedback from, you know, the fairgrounds and from some of the others and just get, get this clarified. And if they have questions or problems, maybe we can work through those and make some adjustments to ours. But, I think some consistency, and I think this kind of goes to Commissioner Laird's point, that, which I think in part was, we need to be transparent about this and we ought to be cautious about this too. So, you know, I, I think that as long as there's a pretty close nexus between the commissioners and these outside boards, which obviously there is, then, then we may want some strings attached in the form of this, a policy that it can work.
And, I, I'm sorry, I didn't answer all of your questions. I agree with Commissioner Nicolason. So, the, the library, the fair board, they're also the legal department's clients, so we would want them to submit any RFP for our review, just like we want the contracts, everything, we'd want that from them as well. That's going to require some outreach on our part, but-
Mr. Chairman, my concern is, when there's a statute, if we violate it, if we, we the commissioners are the ones who violate it, it's different than if some agency violated and we didn't know it. If we violate a statute we know is out there, I don't know about our insurance, I don't know about a lot of things, and I'm totally uncomfortable with guessing. Because I think it puts us in a different liability than if it's just some negligent act by some fairgrounds or somebody like that, that's one thing, but when we're voting on it and we have an attorney and we're supposed to know the law, we're going to have to know the law before I vote on it.
And, Mr. Chair, if, if you rely on the attorney, then I think you guys are covered, even if I'm wrong. And with regards to this, I'm sorry, I was checking other things, I did not specifically look at the statute with regards to a project like this. And so, I can do that before the next, the next work session, I think. So I can have that information to you shortly after a break.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, Madam County Attorney, you're always going to hear from me, it's going to come out of my mouth. I want to see the statute or the case law you rely on, so have that ready to go from here on out, because it'll be helpful to us, won't put us behind in terms, because this, this barn thing, I think they want to get taken care of right away, so the next work session isn't going to work.
No, I mean today.
Oh, today, okay.
Yes, yes, and I apologize, because I should know that.
So just, sorry I wasn't in here off the bat, so, were the, the reasoning for moving forward, was that discussed at all? Or are we just, I mean, we're, we're just trying to figure out the RFP process?
I think we're trying to make sure that what the fairgrounds board has agreed upon to do and who they gave it to, that we legally can move forward with it. The biggest concern I have is that if we're, there's two ways of doing it, we either RFP, put it out two bid, not just picking three people, or we do a sole source, but that's because we only have a single individual company that can actually perform the work that we're wanting them to perform. So I want to make sure it's going, you know, that we're doing it the proper way, but time is of the essence, because we do need to get that barn back up before CNFR hits. So I don't want to, I don't want to move on to another meeting, whatever we can answer and get answers for today, in order to move the process forward, I want to do that, because if we lose a few more weeks on this, we may not have a barn built in time for-
Have we discussed the exceptions or why we could move past beyond the RFP point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So like, expediency, familiarity, it's already been engineered, this is the same company that did prior barns, and it's the cheaper one of the three, so-
Sure. Yep. I'm thinking, and I think Charmaine said that we're, we're good in moving forward on this, I just want to also, during this conversation, moving forward, let's, to Peter's point, let's make sure that everybody understands what the process is and that we follow that from here on out of doing-
Fix it for future, future proof it, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, just to throw this in, is, Jim, the thing I'm, Jim, the thing I'm concerned about as a commissioner, is I always want to see the statute and see if we've complied with it.
And, Mr. Chair, and I'm sorry to do it this way, if you want to take a 10-minute break, we, the, the next item is also just us, I think, but it's at 1:40, so I can, I can run, go check, it, it won't take long.
Yeah. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Chair.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about the expedition, is if there's something in the statute-
Can't hear. Even though they're taking a reset? Yeah. This is how YouTube set up.
Okay, cool. Remains then.
Okay. Mike's off.
You want to render my cell?
Okay.
We've been over that already?
Pause this.
No. Because then all my stuff won't match. Thank you.
And you've got air things, didn't you?
I just wanted them.
I did have several of them.
It was all over the place.
You've got two of them.
Under it.
Mr. Chair, are you ready?
Okay. Charmaine?
So I don't, I don't think there is anything that has a bid requirement or an amount limitation for the county under this circumstance. That condition could be different if the funding, for certain funding, and so, I, like if it was a grant, we'd have to look at the grant requirements. And if it was federal money, we'd have to consider their requirements. The Public Construction Act largely says that Wyoming materials and Wyoming labor have to be considered with regards to what is the lowest.
So, Charmaine, so if I understand that right, if they're non-residents, they have to be, they're, I mean, residents have like a 5% discount rate over non-residents as far as that part of it goes, correct?
Yes.
And that's where, that's basically all you're talking about as far as residency.
Yes, and the statutes do say if something is advertised, then the advertisement has to include that language. But if it's not advertised, there wasn't an advertisement to include it.
Okay. And as far as the funding on this one, this is getting paid out by WORM for insurance purposes.
Right.
And it looks like the, what, WORM's going to cover everything but 35,000.
35,000.
35,000. 20K will be the county's cost plus 5K for deductible plus 15 for surcharge. Forty.
Forty K.
So we're actually at 150.
So the process used this time in order to do this, we're okay with?
Yes, and I guess we don't have any contract in front of us, so I don't know if the fairgrounds wanted the commissioners.
They said they're sending that to you or sent it up to you.
When?
Last Monday, I think, last February, 4th, whenever that was.
All right, I'll find it.
Okay, so anything else on this then? I guess we're good moving forward with having this company get busy on manufacturing then? Okay. Okay. And we'll move on to the four remaining CBOE hearings, discussion for April 4th, 2023. Sherman, did you have something on those?
I didn't, I saw it on the agenda is all.
Chairman, Commissioners, we had, back a couple months ago, like right after we were done, the assessor's office found three Frank properties that had went through the general email account and they had been missed. So we have three of the Frank property ones to do, and then we still have the one outstanding 2020 with Carpenter.
Right.
So we're looking to get those done, so we're looking at April 4th as the date that we would?
Yeah, it would be a regular CC day, and Sherman and I had to discuss a couple weeks ago that I do think that if we get them out, Judge Parks, Judge Brooks will be back after our 4-1, April 1st. So if we were able to make a decision, we'd be able to get the notices out and then we meet that 30-day evidence exchange requirement.
Right.
If, if April 4th would work for all of you guys. And I think we could, I mean, honestly, I think we could knock them out in maybe two and a half hours, but I don't know, because Frank would be, he has three accounts and then Carpenter one.
Mr. Chairman?
Ellis?
Michelle, have these been sent through Tammy to see if she can get them settled first?
Yeah.
And they can't be settled?
Well, Carpenter, I know she, I believe she has been working with Carpenter, but I do believe he was out of reach for a little bit. I'm not sure, because I haven't been in contact with him, but I do believe that she has worked with the Frank as well. She's aware of all of them. So there was a few, I can't say a few of them. Every one of them that was continued, which was like 11 or 16, there's, oh, and there's, that's the other one. We have one gentleman that was continued. He needs, he requested his be continued to be come back to you guys. So out of the 11 or 16, she's taken care of all of the rest.
Is she going to be able to take care of these four?
I don't believe, no.
We don't know that.
Well, Commissioner, what we're trying to do right now is, is get the process going that they need to go through, and so we're setting the date further out. If they get taken care of between now and then, great.
Yeah.
But if they don't, April 4th would be the date that we would hear them.
So I take that back, I guess I forgot about that gentleman, so I guess we have five.
Okay.
Right?
I believe that's right, and Michelle has picked a date far enough out to meet the 30-day evidence submission requirement. So we, we just need a date, we just need to set a date so the hearing notices can be sent.
So we got the work session in the afternoon?
Yeah.
I think she said get them all done in the morning.
Yep, that'd be the plan.
I'm finding this out.
As of now?
As of now, everybody good with the 4th? Okay. All right, anything else on that? We're good? Okay, so then we'll move on to Nautrona County International Airport Board of Trustees.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your time. My name's Kermit Willie. I'm the president of the Casper-Nautrona County International Airport Board of Trustees. I have Casey, Casey Weida with me. She is in our Fly Casper Alliance group. I have my phone here, so if I get stumped, I can phone a friend. I've got Glenn standing by. He's the airport director. What we are here today is to request a renewal of the minimum revenue guarantee that we have done with the Delta connection beginning last April. So we had, we had actually started this November of '21, which, and ran through April 30th, that request was 755,000 of that. They only ended up using 62,000 of it, so it was very successful. We re-upped that commitment at the $600,000 level to take us through December 31st of 2022. They did end up using 428,000 of that. Fuel became an issue and pilot expense became an issue. And so then they came back to us in late November and requested an MRG of 800,000 for the next six months. We, the Board of Trustees at the airport, looked at their proposal at the time, and we declined to bring that to you all for consideration because we didn't think that it was well thought out, and it didn't look like there was a way for them to turn it around and, and be profitable. And so we did not do that. We allowed the, the current one to expire. So all told, we had, between the county and the state, we had used $490,000 of the million 355,000 that had been committed during that timeframe. Since that time, we have been talking to them. They are, and they being Delta, the airline, is in negotiation with SkyWest, which operates at risk on the airport, in order to change their contract so that they can bring in a 76-passenger plane. So a 76-passenger plane would be a two, a two-tiered plane, obviously carry about 25 more passengers, has the same two pilots, it would have two hosts onboard, stewardesses. So the operating cost is a little bit higher, but the fact that you have 50% more seats, it does start to pen out and become near break even, whereas with 50-passenger plane, it didn't appear that it would ever be. So the ask is 880,000 for the period January 1st through June, January 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2023. And I will tell you that, beginning with the, the January, they've already done a little bit better than they projected, so actually the, the modified ask would be in that $830,000 range. I have spoken with a member of the Aeronautics Commission, and just to get a read to see if they both have interest and have the money to do this. In his opinion, he said they have both, and so it would likely that, be that the state would come back and be able to back us by, with 40%. With the previous requests, Advanced Casper had also said that, and I say we, because I'm on the board of Advanced Casper as well, and while we have not been able to get this in front of our board yet, the executive committee thinks that there's a high likelihood that we would come back with a similar amount that we did last time, which was in that $80,000 range. Of that, I think we've spent 50,000 of the 80,000 that we had committed originally. And then we're also working through the Fly Casper Alliance to try to help also defray the costs a little bit.
The Fly Casper Alliance is reaching out to the business community to offset some of these costs, and right now we're getting a favorable response, as long as we can sort of see it, the end to this, or at least a balancing out of it, so that it's not ongoing. But for this particular round, we're hearing a positive response from the business community.
So Glenn had sent some of the projections, and several of the pages, they're marked at the top in, in pencil, whether or not, you know, what, what the aircraft type is. So the first couple are the CRJ 200, and the last one is the CRJ 900, and that's the Canada Air version of the 76-passenger, Embraer also has one. It's, the Embraer one is used between here and Denver on the United flights. It's a, it's a very popular aircraft. The, the actual dry cost on that is slightly higher than it is on the 50-passenger. The only thing that you need to add in is additional depreciation on the plane. There's a moderate difference in the fuel consumption, but not very much between the 50 and the 76, and then you have the one extra flight attendant.
Commissioner North? Just out of curiosity, have you guys brought any of this stuff to the city of Casper and requested any funding from them?
We have not at this time, because as representatives of the Casper-Nautrona County International Airport, we basically work for you, and so we wanted to bring it to you first. We, because of our knowledge of a couple of the other organizations, Advanced Casper and the Fly Casper Alliance, we, we do have some knowledge that they will be helping us.
Okay, because I know, I know last time that Glenn was here, he was talking with a maximum of, well, 20% match up to 80,000, but that's not, that doesn't really add a whole lot to the, to deferred cost off, off of 830,000. That's a lot of money for six months. So.
What, what we're very hopeful of and what we'll have a better understanding for within the next couple of weeks is how they do with their negotiation in order to get a different plane in. Once that goes through, it doesn't happen overnight because they have them loaded into a schedule. Based on our longstanding good relationship with SkyWest, they have continued to serve us, they didn't just drop us right at the end of the year, and they did know that we were, that we didn't go back to the well, so to speak. And then they, because of the good relationship we have, they reached back out to Glenn and, and basically give him some insight into what they're doing in order to make this happen. Now, it's, SkyWest Delta Connection flies for a lot of other airports other than just Casper, obviously, so.
Just out of curiosity, has anybody approached, have they approached Delta to, to have a similar operating agreement as they do with United?
Do we have a what again?
Has anybody, have they approached, has SkyWest approached Delta to, to see about getting the same type of operational agreement that they have with United, where they have guaranteed funding and they're not having to?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Okay.
I have this.
Ellis?
What happens if we don't give you any money at all?
It's likely that we'll lose the service, and in the event that we do, we, we probably would not see it back in, in my lifetime. A lot of, a lot of communities that are actually bigger than us, the SkyWest Delta Connection has already pulled out of. We, we, the airport board, on an annual basis, go down to St. George, we meet with their group, we take them to lunch, but we provide them with economic data, employment's leakage study, all sorts of information that we compile for them on an annual basis and we keep in front of them. So we've developed a good relationship over the years. That's really the only reason that we have it now, is that we got the heads up from one of the schedulers that we were going to be dropped and we needed to do something about it, so.
How long do you think it'll go on? Will it go on for 10 years, 15 years, 20 years?
My feeling from looking at the, if you look at the last page, it takes roughly a 67% loan factor, which should be fairly doable, given that type of plane. It's a very comfortable plane to fly on. We may be looking at a continued revenue guarantee, but at a much smaller level.
So what's the chances it'll go on for, add in United?
I, I would think that there's, there's a very good chance that it will. Given that, understand that we, we are one of the few airports that hasn't done this in the past. I mean, when, when we jumped in and did this revenue guarantee, we'd done onesie-twosies over the years. Remember when we had the, the flight to Chicago? So we had a $400,000 backdrop on that one, which United happened to use all of in about four months. But times were different, the, a lot of, that really failed because that was during the time when fuel costs spiked so high, and they didn't have any hedges on fuel costs, so it put them behind the eight ball, so we lost out there. When we had the flight to Minnesota, we also had a, a backstop on that one. Allegiant flew in at their own risk. This, this airline flies at their own risk, so we haven't had that in the past, but, you know, every other municipality in the state that has air service has some kind of a revenue guarantee or a minimum seat purchase. Like Sheridan right now has that, that minimum seat purchase that the state backs. Because we have more than one flight a day already, we don't get that. Pretty much everybody else does. But the state would be willing, I, I'm not committing that they would, but I mean, our participation would be contingent upon the state backing us at least 40% of this.
I don't remember what meeting it was I've attended that this was discussed, but it sounds like DOT within budget, it is, the funding is available there for the state. I don't remember for their participation, I don't remember. I don't think that's been signed yet, though, but I believe it was added in or is, is in there, so.
I just talked to Bill LaVore this morning, and he said he thinks that everybody would be willing to go along with it, and he indicated to me that they had the money, so. I think that we've got a better-than-average chance that they would back us on this.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for coming in, and we appreciate your time today. I'd be inclined to, you know, agree to not to exceed or up to, you know, that level that, that Glenn's talking about in his letter. I'm not sure if that's still $340,000 or if it's a different number.
So the ask includes a couple of different moving parts. I tried to simplify it by just saying what exactly it is that they came to us with from January 1 on. Glenn, when he explained it in, in his letter, he was taking into account monies that had not been yet used, that were formerly committed, and assuming that they would be committed and used to pay the deficit that they had in January. and used to pay the deficit that they had in January. And so that's, that's why there's kind of a mixing of the numbers. But from a guerrilla math standpoint, if the beginning ask was 880 and they performed $50,000 better in January than they projected, that would make the total ask 831, which would mean the county portion would be 344,000.
Mr. Chairman.
You know, Kermit, how many, how many passengers this affects?
How many passengers, I guess what, let me see if I can phrase this a little bit better. So we're, when you put up 400, 500,000, you're figuring you're, you're paying for a lot of passengers' flights somewhere.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering how many, and then I'm wondering how many of them are Nautona County residents or people coming from other counties.
Okay, so that's a, that's a good question. So the, the Delta flight to Salt Lake is a, is a popular one, even though they have cut us back to one flight a day. It is a run, which is return overnight, so that means you can be first out in the morning and catch connecting flight and then last back in the evening. It, it's not the best if you're a business traveler and you wanted to get back in the middle of the day, but it does provide that knowledge that you have that last flight of the day to come in on, and you're going out first to, to get the most connections. We keep logs of everyone that's in our parking area, so we have a daily log of that. We know how many are local and how many are, are from other counties, and we get a smattering of people from around the county. There used to be a lot of white trucks out there, obviously, which are all out of state, but they're, you know, they're very important business travelers, and we can provide that for you. I can, I can have Glenn work that up and get it to you this afternoon.
Well, and in January of this year, there were roughly 1,700 passengers on the SkyWest flight.
Total, the total?
Yeah.
Could we go back to math, Mr. Chairman?
All right.
So eight, say 831, $831,000, and then 60% of that?
Yes.
All right, so just under $500,000.
Yeah, it's, it's roughly 345,000.
I understand, yeah, so again, $831,000 times 60%, it's $498,000.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking at, yeah, I, I see that, I see that where I, I got crosswise here. So the, the county's portion would be 531, then less the, the 29, so just shy of 500, you're right.
Okay. So I was just talking with some friends last night, and they talked about driving to Denver because, quote, "That's what you do." But then because of this storm, they bought a ticket out of Casper. Now, I know that's United, but my, my hope is that we get to a point where that isn't what you do when you are a resident of, of Casper. But I, I think that, and I mentioned this last fall, when, and I, I think Kermit, you were there at the presentation, at the work session, you know, I, I would still like to see Delta or SkyWest engage in some marketing locally and to work on their prices, because frankly, sometimes I get the sense that they don't care. And, and I think when we do this kind of minimum revenue guarantee, we're not incentivizing them to care. And so I, I know that's a different conversation at a different point, but I'm, I'm wanting to commit to this with the expectation that both Fly Casper Alliance commits an amount and that Advanced Casper is in that same ballpark of $80,000. And I'd like to see the city of Casper perhaps at some point, maybe that's another conversation. But I, I think we, I can, I can be for this, but I, I'm gonna get tired of 20 years of this unless I see, you know, continued business and continued investment by Advanced Casper. I totally appreciate that, but, but also that there are efforts being made on Delta or SkyWest's part to drum up business.
One of the things we're doing toward that is we're working with Sheridan. When, when they were losing some of their flights, they got the, the city together and they were able to get a lot of people to use it. And, you know, because it's very easy for them to drive to Billings, it's a lot closer than it is for us to, to go to Denver. So there are things that we're doing in the background. That's one of the things Fly Casper Alliance is doing, and, and so we will be pushing toward that. We don't have the employments that we had prior to COVID, and a lot of that is, is business travel. A lot of people were trained to, to Skype and to drive during COVID, and it's, it's hard to bring that back, but we're working on it. The airport does also provide a, an advertising budget that we go to them with, and we do an annual campaign, Escape to the Sun, and we, we do help defray the cost of those ads for the airlines. And, you know, we go to them proactively and say, hey, it's time to do this again, let's, let's get it going. So we are pushing on all fronts to do that. We just think it's very imperative to maintain the, this service because it does a couple of things. It opens up that market for the flights that go in and out of, of Salt Lake, which, that's the Delta Connection, and Delta goes a lot of places, more, I guess, maybe more economically than, than United does. And so we, we want to maintain that, and by maintaining it, we also give some competition to United so that they don't have a monopoly situation here, which personally I don't think would be good for us. I, I fully agree, and I made the statement that you just made about incentivizing them not to do anything by doing this, but we are at a point where we know they're working toward it, and we know that the, the wheels grind pretty slow in that, but we, if, we think this is like an olive branch, that they'll look more favorably upon us, and, and we, we will be in the running for the, for the better plan.
Good, I think that's important, and I think that'll be a better service to our, our public here and, and the people in central Wyoming. I do appreciate your efforts, and I think Glenn's doing a great job. So thanks for helping me understand what the, the airport's doing, but it can't just be the airport and the county, so thank you.
And if you have any other questions, you know, I'm always available.
Kermit, I do have just one question. So the bigger planes that are coming in, it's not changing the amount of flights because we only have a morning and after, or morning and evening flight, correct?
Right.
So it's a bigger plane, essentially?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
You bet, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you know of any other? Oh, yeah, oh, okay. Because I'm sending out heating notices right now, so I was just like, which one? Because I'm editing the hall of justice one, and, and so I was just like, which one?
Hello. Can I help you out?
Hi, Michael.
Hi there. It's okay if I handle this out? It's not, we'll talk about that. You gotta push, push the handle in. Nope, you don't want me to install. I charge too much and take too long. We're waiting for Jim? He doesn't want to take the blame.
Okay, we're ready then.
All right, Chairman, this is Ron Shosh, architect with Emerson and Associates for the Casper Mountain Trail Center. I think mostly we're here today to kind of go over final finishes on the proposed lodge, and if everything goes well, I'd, I'd like to get the nod to go ahead and finalize the bid documents and get those out for advertisement in the next three weeks. And so I'll, I'll let Ron Shosh go off. He's got a little bit of an update on the design estimate for the project as well. Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. Appreciate you having me here today. Just to give you a little bit of an update on the project, I gave you some copies of some renderings there, and we'll talk about those in a minute, and the floor plan. And that's what we've been working with, with the design committee and the engineers in my office. Tell you a little bit about the project. We've chosen to go with a pre-engineered metal building. A lot of that's due to its durability, the fire resistance on the mountain, the rot resistance. My understanding is the last building, there were some rot issues and things like that, so we want to make sure we got some moisture resistance. Ease of construction with the minimum amount of time that we have to build up on the mountain because of the weather, you know, while the, we get this out to bid, hire a contractor, they can actually order the pre-engineered metal building, get it on order, as soon as the snow clears and they can start excavating up there and get the foundations going, they can do that. One thing with the soils up there, the geotechnical engineer wants the, the soils up there to settle, once we put the foundation on it for a period of time. So they can get the foundation poured, get that settled, and then the pre-engineered metal building will eventually come to the site and they can get it all erected. The building right now is approximately 4,600 square feet. In the banquet hall, code would allow you to have about 250 people in there if they're just sitting in chairs. So if you had like a conference speaker, something like that, that's what it would allow. For tables and chairs, it would allow about 116 people in there. Realistically, you're probably gonna see about 80 to 100 people in there. The construction budget as of right now, we're right at the $2.8 million mark. There were some things that were added. We've added a trash enclosure, we've added the, the larger parking area. Larger parking area originally was gonna be an ad alternate. It is in there as part of the base bid right now, so right now we're at that $2.8 million mark. We've got about, within that number, we've got about $2.2 million is for the actual construction, and then there's another $220,000 to account for inflation and contingencies, so unforeseen things that come up or whatever. If the material costs come in high, we've got a little bit of money to play with there for flexibility, and then with the design fees in there, we, we hit that $2.8 million As far as colors go, so you see the renderings in front of you, and on the screen, that's actually an interior view. One thing to point out is no matter what colors we put in, when you print them, when you put them on a different monitor, you change the lighting on there in the program, the colors just look different. So we brought you actual samples here today to discuss. This is what the, the design team came up with, including Jim Bell and staff from the county. But here's the building here, and so the main facade is going to be this metal panel that has this board and bat look. So it's supposed to kind of be reminiscent of wood, board and bat, but it's actually metal. The color.
Mr. Shosh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if, when you display those to us, if you'd also turn around and show them to the few people in the back, thanks.
So board and bat siding. And then the color is, for lack of a better term, I'm gonna call it taupe, and I'll show this to everybody, and I'm gonna pass it around to you all so you all can see it. But that is the main part of the building, and the roof and soffits will be this darker anodized bronze. It's actually a darker one, it's almost like a black color. And the idea with that is to, in one part to, one for the contrast, but also... And the idea with that is to, in one part, to, one for the contrast, but also the county wants to harvest the snow off the roof. So we want the roof to shed off the backside, so they can harvest the snow for the trail. So this will help get that snow off of there. The main entry itself, we wanted to have a little bit of a contrast here and to emphasize the entry. So that is actually going to be this corrugated metal, just to give a little more rustic look to it. And this actually is going to have a rust-looking finish to it. But this is a painted rust material. It's not the rust, it's not the actual rust, the metal rust that you see around town that stains concrete and that sort of stuff. This is just a painted finish on there. And then, we'll talk about the base around it in a minute. But at the actual fireplace, we have this stone that's a little more reminiscent of the stone on the mountain. And around the base of the building, we want to do concrete because they're gonna have a lot of equipment up there. Plowing snow, digging the building out, anytime we get like one of these blizzards, it's gonna happen here in the next few hours. So we wanted to protect the base of the building. We looked at a few different options. The last option we were looking at was, basically, it's called a a concrete form, for lack of a better term, to give it this rock look. But we can't find anything that's going to match the stone that we're actually recommending here. So we want to go back to an earlier idea of actually just having rubbed concrete. So basically, after they peel the form work off, they go and they rub it with a concrete slurry. It's gonna be easier to patch in the future and things like that. And that's actually the rendering that you have in front of you, is basically where it's just the solid concrete. And so that's one of the things we wanted to talk about changing to. And that's where we're at, as far as the project goes. And then like Michael said, in the next two, three weeks, we're gonna put this out to bid. So I would like some, I guess, opinions of people as far as the stone...
What's that around the border?
So at the bottom? Yeah, so that's concrete. So that's about thirty-six inches of concrete. And so when they're up there plowing and doing their loaders and bobcats and whatever else they're gonna use for that, we want to make sure the building's protected, because it's gonna be metal. And even if it was wood or anything else, we want to get elevated up because we don't want them damaging the building with their equipment. So that was gonna be, initially, we were talking about doing essentially what is like a concrete stamp on there. It's actually put into the form work. When you peel it away, it leaves, basically, could look like rock, could look like wood, could look like any geometric pattern. But we think it's good, with what we can find, there's nothing that's gonna look as good as this, till you can get close to it. So what we would like to do is just go with flat concrete instead, which is the rendering that you have in front of you.
And we decided, the committee decided not to go with any like stained concrete or anything because it's hard to match that stain if you have to patch it. Hey, we don't plan on running into it, but if something does happen, at least it makes it easier to patch and blend it in and fix that. The other reason to have the concrete up so high is, is the snow levels. You know, if the snow's piled up against the building, it's less likely to cause damage to the building.
So I guess we're looking for feedback on the concrete around there, in addition to giving you all the update and answering any questions you have.
I would tend to agree with the concrete not going with the stamp on the bottom there itself, because if you hit it, you hit it and you can patch it, but if you hit one, hit it after it's been molded like that, then you gotta try and make the rock look like a rock again. So personally, myself, I think straight concrete would be the way to go.
And originally, we had planned to do actual rock there, but, you know, when that gets damaged, it's hard to repair, plus the cost, this is a little more cost efficient than than actually doing rock, a rock surrounding completely around the building.
Yeah, because these, I mean, if you hit these, they will get knocked off if you're hitting them with a piece of equipment. They're going above the first three feet, so they're gonna be up on, that's the chimney for the fireplace. And then they'll be on the inside as well. So they're up three feet off the ground here, up in that area. That will be this stone. Yep. It's a, it's a concrete composite material. But it's, like I said, we're keeping it up the three feet, so it shouldn't get damaged up there. And then it'll be inside the building as well, right there.
That'll save you from having to build a bigger foundation underneath it, too.
Yeah.
I personally think that having, having a rubbed concrete on the outside is definitely a lot better option, just for one thing, if you had the other stuff, you're gonna have snow and ice accumulate inside. Anything that's textured on the outside, and then it's gonna flake off eventually. It may take a few years, but once it starts, it'd be bad. That is a lot easier to get everything cleaned off.
I'm not in love with the flat concrete, Wayne's coat, kind of that top three feet. I understand the concerns about, you know, wanting to protect it from rogue equipment and operators. And to, you know, the fact that there's gonna be commonly two feet of snow at least up against most of the portions of this building. I guess my, 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 my hope would be that at least on this side of the building that, you know, is gonna be on the entrance side, so this would be what, the south side?
Yeah.
Roughly. That we could make it look a little bit nicer. I don't have any qualms with any of the materials or any of the other colors that you've selected, but it kind of reminds me of some bathrooms in the mountains that I've seen at times, you know, where it's just kind of like this is a public building. Well, this is, this is a big deal, I think, for the community, so I would mind trying to dress it up a little bit on that south side. I am very pleased that you're working the additional parking. It's something that I've pushed for a while. I think that's important. I think it's important to do it, you know, from the onset, rather than as, you know, maybe needed down the road. I think this is a good time to do it, and I think that'll also help the public out while the construction project is going on. And I mentioned that to Michael a couple of times before and some others, but not you, Ron. So thanks for your work on this. That's it for me.
Commissioner Nicholas, and I just want to revisit the concrete. The architects did come up with a plan, and the committee kind of rewrote it. You had a, like a wood form, two-by-four.
Yeah, there was a similar, a similar idea, but it was with a wood print on there instead of a stone, going horizontally. Still the concrete.
Yeah, it was like an old-school form kind of print, you know, where you have two-by-sixes, two-by-eights that you used to form up concrete with, that kind of print on there.
And the one thing with the print, no matter what we wind up doing, is it's, unless we actually go to actual wood forms, and they form it up out of wood plank, if we use the wood forms where it's essentially like a stamp, there will be a seam about every ten feet. So you're gonna see a vertical seam, because it's gonna look like a rubber stamp, essentially. Yeah, they, yeah, they decided they wanted to go to the stone look instead of the wood form. But we can't find any good forms that come close to what this'll look like. So it'd be two very different stone looks right next to each other.
What is the cost difference between going just flat concrete and actually putting stamp to it?
You know, I don't have the number for that. It really depends on if the contractor can rent the forms, if they've gotta buy the forms, how available the forms are, all those sorts of things. So really, I haven't done a cost evaluation. I can tell you that it's gonna be less expensive just to do the rubbed concrete.
That'd be substantially different.
I would think in the tens of thousands of dollars.
Yeah. Thing about it is, with most of that being buried under snow, I mean, you're gonna see it during the summertime.
Except for this year, it might be covered up.
So.
What about doing an option so that the contractor had an idea, and the cost was not tens of thousands, but a couple thousand? And then Michael and the committee, and your recommendation was, hey, this is, this is bad, at least as an option, you could make a decision down the road, kind of punt for today. And then down the road, you know, okay, yeah, we're just gonna stick with the flat concrete.
So do like avoid, do a concrete form option, but kind of leave it open-ended as to what the look of it is for now?
The odd problem that I see is what you've already brought up, getting something to match what you've got right there, so it doesn't, so it doesn't look like we've mixed and matched stuff. You know, because it does need to look somewhat uniform.
But if they have a different form that's not stone, then you're not trying to match two types of stones together. You may have stone going on to some other form.
Yeah, we can look into it. I don't know offhand, I don't know off the top of my head, if there's, I'm imagining there's gonna be a different cost depending on the form. So I mean, it could just be, I guess, like an allowance or whatever, and just have them put in a, fill in a line item for an allowance for forms, and then see what they want to present on it, I guess. Because, yeah...
How close can cars get to that? Can a car pull right up next to that?
No, no, not really. I mean, the, the staff would be up there, probably plowing snow and things like that. Yeah, but it's, or however they want to do it. But the, but the parking is out in front of the building. There's a bus drop-off, and then there's parking to the south, and then there's gonna be parking to the west where the ADA parking and stuff is. So, I mean, unless somebody like really intentionally like drove up there or accidentally drove up there, but it's not meant, it's not meant for you to get close to it.
I keep thinking in my mind, if you put a piece of drill pipe up there, so nobody can hit it.
Yeah, I think it's just, I think it'll complicate things for plowing and everything else. You know, I think it's like everything else. I mean, if somebody wants to hit it, they can hit it. I mean, they can, people can drive over...
Somebody's up there with a blade, they can scrape it pretty easy, they don't see it.
Well, and that's the, the intent right now is the, the concrete there is at the same level as the parking lot, so that they can go in there and plow it, backblade it, and everything else. There's not curb and gut or anything up there. We're not putting an asphalt parking lot up there. It's just gonna be a gravel parking lot.
Ron, Hogadon, they've got some stamped base concrete around their building, don't they?
I can't remember if they did it. If they did, it was, if it is, it's wood stamped, I think, but I'm not, I don't have the image in my mind exactly. A lot of their stuff goes down to grade at the front entry. Like, they've got wood and stuff going right down to the concrete, which I wouldn't recommend, but that's what they chose.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lamberson's here. I wonder if he, since he lives right around the corner from, from Hogadon, if he would be able to speak to that stamped concrete, or... Would, would you just give us a minute?
Yeah, because I was involved in that Hogadon design, built everything from the beginning. Yeah, a lot of exposed concrete, and we're gonna make it look better. So with what they, what Ron's referring to, the board forming, there's a lot of that around, you can see, and that was one spot. So the board forms are rubber, they put them inside the forming, and then when you pull it off, you got it. Like he said, it looks like wood, but maybe with some interruptions. We want to make it look better, so we went with dyed concrete, which is an option for this, you know, maybe brown. I mean, to put color in the concrete is relatively inexpensive. By the way, there's a guy who knows tricked concrete in this town, and he's a consultant, and he's done it forever, his whole life. Art Go-Rite with Mobile Concrete. He's, he knows this stuff way better than I do, and he's got the guys, if you want some ideas. But anyway, we used a black concrete with board forming, and it's, and there were a number of concrete contractors. It was a difficult job, so we lost a few in the way. But when the, the forms were pulled off, and you've got those tie rods through the concrete, that left holes like it does when you're doing foundations and stuff. And Steve, you know what I'm talking about. And we had to patch those, and it was a tough match to patch that, work with the board form. So it got a little complicated, but we got Art up there and figured a few things out. He wasn't even a contractor on the job, he just, he's interested in all these things on the mountain. And he came up with sort of a patch, and we got it worked out. It looks pretty good. It looks way better than bare concrete. But the dye is an option. Tie, ties inside the wall, the holding forms in place when you break those off. You do get holes, you have to deal with them. Maybe just the plain concrete's the way to go, but there's pretty inexpensive ways to give it a little texture, not a ton. And nothing's, nothing's simple. You know, but I do agree totally with it. You need a really durable weatherproof finish on that first three feet. If you want to see fancy concrete, it's all over town. Sort of what we're talking about is Hogadon's chimney, the stairwell, there's quite a bit of it up there. But everything's a compromise. But Go-Rite's a good resource, and he's, you know, he's into this.
Mr. Chairman, did you guys look at dyed concrete for that base?
We thought about it. So the Parks Department and, and county staff really kind of focused on minimal maintenance, what it'll take if we repair it in the long term, and got away from the dying of the concrete just because it's very difficult to match if, if we have to patch it in someplace down the road. And so we were trying to kind of keep it simple. I mean, I agree, I think dyed concrete would, would obviously look better. But my staff's looking at an overall long-term maintenance of the project and, and the longevity of the building is kind of how we went with that. But I'm not opposed to dyed concrete, it's just, you know, we kind of stepped away from that as a committee.
Yeah, it's kind of, I don't know if you've ever seen somebody like tuck-point their house or something like that, the mortar joints in brick, and they go in and they try to patch that in, and, you know, they're different colors and different ages and everything else, and you see, you know, light new concrete in there or whatever, and it's the same thing with colored concrete and everything else. It's like, you're never gonna match that colored concrete if you've gotta patch it. And I just, I used to work for maintenance departments and everything else, and I used to work for Parks Department, and I just cannot imagine that this building is not gonna get hit by a piece of equipment. I don't care how trained you are, I just would be very surprised that at some point in time that this building doesn't get scratched, chipped, or something.
It's not if it's one of them.
They're gonna have to put the drill pipe around it.
Well, they're still gonna have to plow, that's the thing. I mean, it's still gonna...
They hit the drill pipe. They don't hit the building. I've gone through this before. Rather have them hit the pipe from the building. That's just my own, what I see up there, because I don't like a blade coming in. Because that blade's gonna scrape that when they get up there. Those guys up there in the snow and working, and they're in a hurry, and they scrape down four feet of, of the concrete and go on the way, and there you are. If they hit the pipe, they repaint the pipe.
So it's not painted concrete, it's dyed concrete, right?
Well, this is plain concrete, it's not anything.
No, but, but what we've kind of...
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Your scratch is gonna be a scratch, but it's not gonna be, you know, oh, now we've got a gray scratch on brown concrete, right? So we're really talking about something that's a pretty good hit, or something that you take off a corner of, of the building. Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna be pretty frustrated if somebody's driving too fast with their big truck plow, but I can see, you know, UTV and, and that size of plow in and around the building pretty easily.
Yeah, the equipment that we have, this would be cleared with a skid steer or, or snow grimmer. Right now, we have pretty capable operators in the grimmers. But I also have some operators that are pretty long in the tooth, so, you know, looking five years down the line. But hopefully, we have trained operators, but things do happen. Equipment slides, somebody bumped something, somebody not paying attention, but the intention's never to hit the building. It really... I don't like the aesthetic of it myself, and it looks like, I just, I don't really care for look. And then if, if that's only a foot or a foot and a half up, it'll be easily buried with some of the snowfall that's coming off. I don't expect our snow removal to, you know, they'll probably be a foot off of this, but then that piece of equipment's buried, which causes a potential hazard as well. So that's just my opinion on it. I mean, if that's what we want to do to protect the building, we can. It, it leaves additional places for kids to climb and slide and trip, because that drill pipe gets pretty slick, unless you put painted textured paint on it or something.
Peter, I think to your point, though, the, so if I'm hearing it right... Peter, I think to your point, though, the so if I'm hearing it right, we're talking we're not talking about dying the exterior of the concrete foundation. It'll be a color added to the whole thing. So it should be the same color throughout, that if somebody comes and hits a corner of it and knocks a corner off, it's still going to be the same color. It's just going to be missing a corner that would have to be where the problem in color comes in is if you go to patch it, trying to match that color back.
Correct.
But at the end of the day, if there's a little nix to the thing, it's going to be if it's brown, it's going to be brown throughout.
Yeah, I mean, if if you all want it dyed concrete, we can do dyed concrete, but that's the that's the big thing is just not if you ever got to patch it. It's going to be. Difficult to match.
How far down does this go as far as I mean, I know this is going to be part of your foundation. So how far below grade does it go or we?
Uh approximately four feet.
Because that's the one thing. I mean, it adds a lot of expense when you when you start adding that much dye.
Yeah, but it is a it'd be it would be definitely be a cheaper option than stamping it or anything like that. You know, of all the options.
Well, I'll go back again and saying that I think if you stamp that thing with stone and somebody hits it, it's going to be a pain to go back and try and fix that and make it look like a rock again. I would rather put the color into it to give it something, still have it slick on the side. But it's colors throughout, so if it gets damaged, it gets damaged. It's not going to you're not really going to be able to tell unless you go to patch that back in. So um I personally like the the flat looking and put a color to it.
Yeah, me me too. And and listen, I mean, if we're gonna pinch pennies, then maybe this is an option too. Dyeed concrete. If we decide that we've got to save five thousand bucks, I don't know. If it goes that far beneath grade, it's going to be pretty expensive, but I'd still like the option. And 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 maybe the public can weigh in on on it and and convince us to go one way or the other, you know, save taxpayer money. Or, you know, make it a little dressier with a little color in that concrete.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Ron. You mentioned a rubbed on slurry for texture. You're talking like a hand textured drywall in a house kind of.
Well, it no, they just they they basically just go over with the smooth finish, but they so what's going to happen when they pull these forms off? There's going to be little air pockets and holes and all these other things. And so when it's finished, you really wanted to rub it while it's green with a concrete slurry so it bonds. A lot of contractors will choose to wait for various reasons. And then they have to put a bonding agent and everything else on there and then they put their coating over it and over time that can chip off whatever. So if we do it, we want it done while it's green and they get get the slurry on there and fill all these holes and make it look nice. Like Bruce was saying, if we do any sort of form. There's ties that go into the formwork and things like that. So when we go to peel off, you're going to have to fill those holes or whatever. And you're going to have to try to get to match and things like that. So there's touch up kind of either way with what you go with. And again, like with the colored concrete, I think it's a little bit harder to get that match as you do it. But I we can go in and we can put the colored concrete as an option, then maybe we put in the plank foundation as an option, which like Bruce said, that's pretty much what you see up there at Hogedon on the elevator shaft in the fireplace. And then just kind of see what the numbers come in at. And it is one of those things too, we can talk to the contractor and have them give us a maybe a mockup of it and then decide, you know, are we going to do this or not? And you guys can see it as a mockup and then say yea or nay.
Anything else from you?
So Peter, going back to your bathroom comment, does the dyed concrete and the stamp take care of that issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
No, it it I'm very impressed with the work you've done and and I like layout. I like the design.
It's it's a limiting budget, so we appreciate it.
I understand. I understand.
Speaking of which, can you give me that breakdown again? You said two point eight million, two point two two to or two point two to the construction? And then you had two other items.
Yeah, so the so the building construction with the building in sight are about two point two million. The inflation and contingency number we've got is about two hundred and twenty thousand. And then the design fees in there were three hundred and fifty thousand. So that brings you to the two point eight. Approximately, I didn't give you every single number in there, but it comes out to the two point eight million.
Mr. Chairman, I ask about that lumber out of Brick House. There's a corner and I keep looking at this corner and my cleaning lady kind of went out, didn't mean to hit in, but clipped that corner. Broke those bricks all off. And then I have a building downtown where the neighbors kept bumping into the building. And so I put up about oh, two, three feet away from the house. I put some drill pipe in there. They beat the hell out of that drill pipe over the past ten years, but they don't hit my building anymore. So I'm just throwing that out as a possibility because I can see it's hard and there's no real area keeping people away from that building. Some guy backs a truck in there, does any number of things. They're going to catch that building. So I hope you would give that some serious thought because I just I've been through it myself. And I don't mind going out there and painting the hole that they keep hitting yellow. And because I don't have to build a building.
Yeah. What if we did? What if we did something like that and that became a place to put skis? And we welded the vitres on it.
You know.
And then it could be a ski a ski rack and it could protect the building.
Yeah, we we've got plans for ski racks along the exterior of the building. And and Ron's just showing me a little drawing that, you know, maybe that could be reinforced, a little more solid piece of equipment such as, you know, sucker rod or two inch pipe or something. It could still be used as a ski rack, but it would also protect the the building.
Because maybe we did like a a high one, maybe there's like one close to the building that's like two pipes going horizontally. And then there's a lower pipe down here and then maybe we just weld a little piece of steel every foot or something like that or eight inches or something like that. And it can just be a place for ski holders to protect the major areas of the building.
In several years, there will be a different commissioner. They'll be really happy when you guys come and say, well, they hit our post four or five times and then it it's going to cost you four hundred to fix it as opposed to they clip the corner in that building and it's going to be eight thousand. That's all I'm saying.
So yeah, that's something we can take a look at.
So is everybody good with the rest of the finishes on? On the building itself? And are they are you we good to a point that you can move forward to your next step on this?
Um I feel like we're in a good position for that. So once I get direction from you guys, let's go to present the bid documents and advertising it. We'll we'll get the architect going on that. Um I uh I need to touch base with legal, see where we're at on making sure we have the insurance and stuff for those bid documents. But I think we're close.
Tom.
Before you guys put that out to bid, can I look at your drawings?
Yeah, you guys will get a set. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're wrapping up stuff with mechanical and everything now and then we'll give you guys a full set to review.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, when do presumably anticipate when this could possibly be possibly finished? Just so the public will know what we're looking at here.
What do you estimate? Best guess?
Depends on the snow this year. I would guess that it will not be open for it would you'd be lucky to have it open for any of the ski season next year. They might they might be able to get there. Yeah, the the building might be open towards the end of it, but it just depends on weather, contractor, material, delays, things like that. Because basically they're not going to get up there to do any clearing or earthwork until the snow's done. And looking at what our winter's been so far, it's going to take a while to get that all dealt with. So they can get up there and start clearing trees and excavating everything else. But the idea is we bid it out now, then get the building order and get that fabricated. So, you know, the pre-energimental buildings do go up pretty quick once they get here. And then they can be inside um doing work and stuff like that. Hopefully, they can get the parking lot to a situation where that's usable, especially doing the second parking lot. I would think that you'll have parking available up there and just a matter of whether or not they can get the building finished in time. Because they it should take at least eight months to do the building, so.
Tom, do you have something else?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. No other questions? Thank you. I think we're about a half hour ahead of time, so we're going to take a real quick break and we'll get a hold of.
Yeah, so we're. So we have two inns and three stalls, one inns and three stalls. Something like that.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so. Guess on the color proof of the concrete.
I'll let Grady pick that.
Grady doesn't like when I pick colors.
Something complimentary.
I'm thinking it'll be more well, it'll be some sort of improvement though.
Excuse me, what oil city can you start to get your name?
It's Ron Shaw.
Ron, did you spell that last name?
S H O S H.
What is your title or position?
I'm the architect.
County architect?
Nope. Architect of the right. Ammons and Associates of K F M, U N T, S E N.
E N Associates. You guys were the the company that came up with the design for the building, right?
They hired us to come up with the design. We're like the third architecture firm we're for.
Do you have any question? So that two point eight million dollars estimate, have you guys kind of arrived at that number?
We have an outside estimate that does the estimating for us. And the the two point eight million is actually the budget was provided from the county.
Gotcha. I thought that was an estimate. I appreciate it.
So he's taking an extra one. Darn it.
I think on those two corners. Because that's what we're doing. Every corner, even I mean, those have the whole. So I just know. I don't I don't. I don't think they're even get that close to. And that's why there's this idea, I mean, I don't want to see ski racks go across the building. But, you know, can you know.
They should enjoy one.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's there's a difference by stop, but that's. Nice thing about that is you don't have to hold two boxes.
Yeah, but he said it was four feet.
Well, and that's why that you're.
Yeah, all colored. Now, they could they could just order a truck or two and have.
No. They have to tell the all trucks the same.
Really?
Yeah, tell what happened with the all.
See, I was thinking of bringing up. Or that first five. Yeah, we need a contractor.
There's six. If you were for it, if you were doing something like a like a tower. Something like that. If you're for it, it's actually. You know, something like that. I have those. You've got to solve. We go from zero to top. And if I move down there. Then you can stop doing anything.
Mr. North.
I keep coming like you have a candle here. I almost. Ah, no.
I don't know.
I'm not going to pretend.
And what it is, so we have.
He's frozen and like.
Who sort of is the J C that we are making this?
They're requesting that the county. Doesn't. Where you're describing your term question. Is that why?
Were there really changes in the terms?
Forgot my. All the paper. I need to go back to my.
Yeah.
How you are overachiever?
Yeah, it depends on.
They're asking for.
I have. Voucher for the person. But they have no intention for.
A month or a month. No, they didn't spend all that. So that was what they were. Saying that we should check. Stuff like that's what's all.
Come back.
Well, I see that.
The main reason what they're asking for is that the fund does figure. And the fund. They're making it possible or so on. I think that's that's. That's true.
I don't know. That's for me.
Have you counted?
Make sure.
All the.
Yeah.
I agree with it.
Oh, well, this is too. Just to calm down.
And it doesn't.
I don't want to forget. I know, it's hard to forget. To sit through it all like.
And then we're assuming that is going to be an exact report.
Yeah, so don't. The stuff.
I I don't like the. All for three days. All started three days.
No, well, yes, it's supposed to, but the early.
Yeah, that's scheduled.
You can't just do what I say. Are you going to be in your office? Oh, you're oh, you are going to do what I say. Ooh.
That was your mommy voice.
Not really. I've heard her talk to her kids. Not really. That was still like being nice.
That was my coworker voice.
Yeah. I did have my mommy voice on earlier today.
But in terms of you guys actually taking the. The budgets.
When you guys reset passwords, does it take five weeks to get them? Yeah, didn't it bring? Place that work a lot of time. So to for them to work. Yeah, because it's like everything that you have to like, everything that you want.
It is difficult to, you know, there's a lot of like work back and forth. If I did something, and it's like. I've considered fully letting it be. Not really sure exactly what the order was like in session because it's to help us represent our area accurately because I'm like.
I would be glad.
Thank you.
So we'll be needing to do this. We did better than that. It's just your. I know it all sounds boring, but I don't like it. But you could ask Michelle. Michelle, who's the chairman of that, uh, new board I'm on?
I, I don't know. Um, I know that, um, Ty.
Oh, the.
Ty is one of the bailiffs and then I know that Judge Christians, oh no, uh, Wilkins is on it. That's all I know.
Now that'd be the one.
Ty would be.
Yeah, it's like if you want us to capture your language, ideally, you don't need to be brave. It's just like one tiny little room where if I had Wi-Fi and a computer and then I could be working the story and then I could go hold Matt Davidson, I would, because it's just like.
I'm bored, you don't have to tell me.
Okay.
But here's what you have to, you have to get some sort of a nice.
Stress fighters to do that.
Separately, yeah, thank you. Yeah, no problem.
I know that any time like every, every time we take a camera, then we have to get permission. And it's just strictly for pictures like when they get sworn in or something.
Well, so, yeah, I can't like take a camera. At least I can take my camera into certain.
And I know something at one time that they were going off and then, um, people were, it was disro.
Well, I, I imagine, and it's actually kind of a relief to, to not have to be like, oh, I know my camera's going off.
But I know at one time even, I don't think I was told they had to like lock up their fire.
Now I gotta believe you.
Yeah.
I am, but I'm done with you.
We have our session.
What is that? Picture of who?
This whole district. Was that a picture of my little guy? It's hundred page school. Hundred page school. Oh, there's Ben. There's the other one. I'm the red bit, like, um. He's like halfway standing over there. He gets it still. Yeah, right.
Daniel, I have a question.
I might have an answer.
I saw Tom.
Uh huh. He's all right.
So I asked him, you guys have a P A department?
I'm looking at. I'm finding that, I thought Poplin was gonna move away a couple weeks ago. I'm like, um, kinda like, um, try to get away. Oh gosh, yeah. Yeah, and Jim asked me.
You're lucky.
It's so sweet. I'm, I'm finding that. Thanks.
No problem.
Did you hear that?
Hmm.
She's finally changing spots with Jordan.
Perfect. All right, thanks, I appreciate it.
I can tell you my building, you don't know my office building.
Don't you worry.
Yeah, remember when I was building that? These guys would come in and go in and frost me. I've got a dent in the wall. Through all the shit. I finally got the guy over there in the little house and get that pipe in one of the pipes, shit kicked out of there. But the building doesn't. I don't know, it's not that, so, at least it's special on the corner. Yeah. I'm just worried about someone pulling up there. So there's quite a bit. For backing there. That's a trailer hitch. Actually, I got the site plan right here. Remember the trailer hitch problems?
Yeah.
Huh? He is. He is.
So. See, this is, this is a little.
He's trying to make his footwork, you know, so he's like. Yeah, it's like a pit leg, you know?
It was like.
Uh huh.
I know exactly what you mean.
I can tell you this by the way you're laughing, you know, everything you've done there. Nothing's wrong.
The only thing left out was the hesitation from how much it hurt.
Yeah. Yeah, but we're doing. I'll feel it on my face. Yeah, I keep going like. Yeah, it is. But it's not like work. But, uh, but there's.
He's like.
Pretty much. Same thing.
You don't get a word.
Really?
Home is not missing anything out there.
Oh, no.
I can.
Well, I'm sure.
I got ticks here.
Well, you're like, oh my God, I'm like, uh, uh, we're not, we're not. We're getting them. We, we said, well, hey, I'm gonna bring it to you. I think we're not that two years. We'll bring that to you on. Sorry.
My third one will get. I fixed it up. Serious.
Yeah. Well, I know.
I know. Well, it's. No more shooting in the national. He worked every day since, really since she worked. Since I've been working.
They can't, they can't. I mean, it's just the blowing, the thousands of people, you just, you wait until the person up. Just can't.
I may have complained, right? You give a pen. Oh, you didn't write that over the board? Oh, they're about to curb it.
I didn't want to watch it, but. It's all your fault. Just saying, gotta blame somebody. Well, it was just. He didn't give her a permit.
Chairman, um, as far as the liquor license renewals, um, don't we have a bunch of those?
So we do, um, and did everybody, everybody got a copy, right, Michelle? I had asked the sheriff to provide, just to provide us a copy of any calls for service to the establishments, just so that we can look at the last year. I actually got two years worth, so I guess for next time, we just need the year that we're dealing with or the previous year that we're dealing with, but just so that we can go through them and look and see what kind of calls for service there are, or if we have any establishments that have repeated calls for law enforcement services themselves. That's really what I'm more concerned about. And I only really, there's one in here that has got a lot of calls to it, but that's something that I think is, something we may need to follow up on. Tracy?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, I can do that in future. Um, if you don't have any questions other than that, I do have a question for the board. The airport, uh, Board of Trustees applied for a retail liquor license under the new, the new airports statute, and I wanted to ask the commissioners, um, as far as the fee for the license. Now, the fairgrounds holds a malt beverage permit through the county and we do not, they do not pay a license fee. They're exempt from that fee. So I was curious as if we were gonna do the same for the board, for the airport board on this, uh, like retail license fee, or if we are going to have them pay.
Mr. Chairman, do they, do they do catering with that retail license?
No.
Okay. And, and you said it's just a malt at the fairgrounds?
The fairgrounds is malt beverages.
As you, does anybody know if the fairgrounds has ever paid the county? I mean, how far back does that go?
As far as I, for as long as I've, for years, over ten plus, I'm gonna say.
Tracy, are they giving up their full liquor license then?
What's that, Dave?
Are they giving, is the airport giving up their full liquor license, or is that?
So the airport did not hold the retail liquor license. Gray's Partners held that license. It was just located in the airport facility. So Gray's Partners chose not to renew that license and the airport is now applying for a, um, retail liquor license under the new airport statute, which does not count towards our, uh, amount of license that we have available.
Okay, yeah, well, that, that's what I was, that's what I was looking at. So that's actually gonna make that, that warrant license available then?
Correct.
Okay.
At a different location, obviously.
Because.
They shouldn't have to pay.
As, yeah, the way, I mean, there's a lot of things that we do as far as other county facilities like that where we don't charge for permits and stuff like that. So I don't have any problem with us not, not charging them for that license.
Fifteen hundred for a year. Now, you know, there, the airport is considered a component unit of the county, just as the fair, the library, et cetera. So if that makes a difference.
Do we know how it's done around the state then, as far as, I mean, other counties, municipalities, do they charge in a similar circumstance?
I don't, because this new, uh, airport liquor license is new, so I'm not real sure. I don't have any information on that.
Okay.
Teton County would probably be the only one that I could reach out to, um, quickly to find out.
Well, obviously, a little airport liquor license can't be used anywhere else but in airport, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't have any questions or issues with that. Is, is C.C. Cowboys Racks, is that parked? Are they, they're still operating?
They're still operating as far as I know, but I haven't been out there.
Anybody know?
Not that I've been there, but I drove by it and they are operating. There, there have been vehicles there.
You see vehicles.
I see vehicles there. Justin?
So, okay, let me just ask the question. So if we see a sufficient concern and problems, um, whether it's calls, uh, to the sheriff, um, whether it's whatever, we have the authority to deny a renewal based on health, safety and welfare, um, is that, is that accurate?
Generally, yes, but this is something that I was gonna discuss in the executive session, just what your authority is.
Legal advice, all right.
But I'll, I'll add to that though, too. I can tell you that in the past, if we've had, like, I'm referring back to the city. If you had problem establishments, then nine times out of ten, you bring them in and have discussions with them or the, in this case, the sheriff would bring them in and sit them down and say, look, here's your calls for service and this needs to, this needs to change. So those discussions, basically it was on a discussion platform to bring those in to try and curb it that way to begin with.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, are those, I, I looked at that, but I couldn't tell, are they calls that the establishment called in on or a, or third parties called in?
Well, it all kinds of depends because you have some, some of these in here are the actual bars where calls have been called in because there's assaults or medicals or, you know, fights that might take place. But then you've got others and I'll give you a good example. You look at Sloane's, I think they had three or four calls out there, but those are calls because there was an accident, somebody came in and called for medical or, um, you know, somewhere it's a convenience store, we stopped in there to make a call to get help, whether it's at the lake or something else, so. So they're, they're not all necessarily, it, it depends on why they're going to that establishment.
Well, if they, if they're the ones calling in and helping their customers, I think that's one thing. It's, I, cause I sure wouldn't want them to say, well, jeez, if you call in, let's just don't call in anymore because they'll take your liquor license if you call in. And so they let stuff happen that shouldn't be happening. That's always the part of it that bothered me. Because that's exactly what, when you go to a liquor commission meeting, when they use them, that's what they use to talk about. You're following the law, we're doing the thing right, we're checking, we're calling the police when somebody comes in, starts something, and now they're holding it against us. So I just, what you've got to figure out is why are they having an inordinate number of things happen? Because is it because they don't have security, they don't have this, they don't have that? But if they're doing everything right, these kind of establishments sometimes have these kind of problems.
But I think you can look into those reports that were provided to you and you'll see that there are, like, the one in particular that, uh, that you look at, a majority of those people calling in are citizens, they're not. It's not by the establishment itself.
That's different.
So.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I do know the sheriff, the sheriff told me that when they were putting in the addresses of the establishments into their system, when they pulled the data out, if it was a traffic, you know, sometimes a traffic stop at that, that address or whatnot would come up also. So he tried to, you know, call those out of, out of the call log, but, so there's that to consider also.
Yep, I mean, even on those, if they do show up, they show up as a traffic stop and to me, that's not a, that's not a concern. But if you have an establishment that has, you know, fifteen ready reports or thirty assaults or, um, you know, whatever it might be, or even shootings, then, then there's, those are the red flags that we really wanna look for, so. Anything else on the liquors, uh, liquor license, or anything else on the agenda? Yeah?
You had it. Better than my B D. Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me? Wanted to briefly give you an update on, uh, one four two five West Ormsby Road, Northern Dreams. Uh, I have a memo dated July nineteenth where I provided an update to Eric Nelson as the Development Director regarding that property. Basically, I've got a timeline that dates back to March of last year where code enforcement had engaged them about, uh, doing some, an addition and some interior remodel without permits. And, uh, to basically fast forward and make this brief, you guys can ask me whatever questions you like. I've got a pretty significant file on it, but what it boils down to is, um, I did do a site visit in June at the request of, uh, the owner who had, had come to secure permits, and so we went and did a site visit to understand what the scope of the work was. And at that point in time, um, I explained what we would need in order to issue a permit and part of that would be plans stamped by an architect. They then gave me some, a floor plan that was very basic and did not meet the needs of what the code requires for an assembly occupancy going under, under a remodel and an addition. And, uh, so in the month that followed that, had many communications over the phone, email, finally gave them a letter that was sent both registered mail, regular mail and email to make sure that it was received, that spelled out the specifics of what was needed for that plan. I then heard, uh, from a local architecture firm, M O A Architecture, uh, regarding some of the details, to be clear, so that they could provide them a proposal. Uh, I am aware that they did provide a proposal. I then heard back in, that would have been last year, and then in January, another local architecture firm contacted me about providing a proposal. And, uh, so I also forwarded the letter to them, uh, and they chose not to, to do a proposal. And then I caught Ron Shosch out in the hall from Amundson and Associates to see if he'd ever been contacted because I did not recall having any conversations with anybody at their office. And he stated that they were contacted but chose not to provide a proposal and never made contact with my office to, uh, to get a copy of the letter or anything. So as it stands, there's still not been any building permits issued for that particular, uh, building. And, um, I've, like I said, I've got, I've got recorded, or conversations I've recorded either via email or other notes I've made to myself regarding the project. And, um, to this date, I still have not received any plans. And so that is the basis of, of the building department's relationship with that building right now is that we've stated that in order to get a permit, we need, at the bare minimum, a code review plan that shows egress paths, occupant load, uh, things of that nature. Because they did modify the floor plan of the building, they deleted one of the egress doors and, uh, they also have an addition started and those things all impact, uh, in a fashion that we need an updated plan before we can determine whether a fire protection system is needed and whether the egress is adequate. They also made mention of adding a commercial kitchen that, that, uh, does not exist at this point in time and that's another reason for, uh, the need to have plans. So that's the basic gist of it and I'd be happy to field any questions.
So Justin, have you been out there to see, are, are they continuing on without a permit with this?
To the best of my knowledge, they have not continued with construction. Uh, the most recent trip that I made out in that direction, I did pull off that exit just to look and no progress had been made on the addition. And so I would assume that no progress had been made on the interior either.
Okay, so it's, it says standstill right now. If they did start again without having these plans in place, what's your course of action?
At that point, they're continuing to do work without a permit and so they're in violation of the things that we've already pointed out to them through code enforcement in terms of violating our rules, regulations, resolutions, et cetera. I mean, a stop, a stop work order is something that I haven't dropped on anyone yet, but it's certainly, uh, an option that the building code and our resolutions allow. Um, I typically try to reach a, a conclusion and, 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 uh, work with folks to get them to the point they need to be rather than just, you know, hammer them with paperwork or violations or things of that nature. Uh, unfortunately, this is a, another example of no good deed goes unpunished in terms of, you know, trying to, trying to compromise with folks and try to get them to where they need to be.
Was the place closed?
Yes. And it was closed when we made our site visit in the middle of June.
Who owns it?
I'm not certain. I would have to get back in here to find out who the actual owner is. Ed Rojas is the gentleman that is operating it and I've spoken with him, his daughter and his son-in-law. But it's my understanding that he doesn't actually own the building, he's, uh, leasing it.
So they haven't communicated with you?
I haven't heard anything new in several months, no.
And they haven't retained professional service?
And they haven't retained professional services for architectural assistance and that kind of thing?
To my, to the best of my knowledge, no. MOA, in my last conversation with them, they had not received an affirmative to begin work. And like I said, I spoke with Ron Shosch, they declined to provide a proposal. And when I spoke with Perry Gilbert at GSG, a couple of days later, when he called me back after receiving my letter, he stated that they were not going to provide a proposal either.
So you can do nothing, you can send another letter or issue a stop work order?
The, the stop work order would be if they were to continue construction illegally, which I have no reason to believe they've done.
But you haven't been inside recently?
No, I have not.
What, what's next? I mean, why, why wouldn't you issue a stop work order just so it's of record?
You know, we, basically, at the, at our last meeting with Mr. Rojas, Eric and I, Eric Nelson and I met with him up in Eric's office, and clarified the needs in terms of hiring an architect and what that would lead to. And at that point in time, Mr. Nelson advised that, yeah, the ball's in their court, and we really didn't need to take any further action at that point in time. I, again, I don't have any reason to believe that they are doing work illegally, I feel like it's just on standstill, so. Adding a stop work order, I mean, I would, I could consult with Charmaine, but I think it would just be adding insult to injury at this point. But I'm open to ideas, I mean.
Well, if it's, if it's on your radar, it's on our radar, and just doing nothing just doesn't seem like that's the, my preferred way of handling it. Whether it's another letter, I mean, I think, Justin, you're great at trying to be informal and communicate and get people to, you know, nudge and prod as necessary, and get people to do what they need to do. But, you know, I, I don't know, at some point, like, just, I think we need to make a decision and get it off your radar. And, and I, doesn't a stop work order just then make it of record that nothing else shall be done until they bring it into compliance?
Yeah.
Is this just a matter of money, that you just don't have the money?
I think that is part of it, yeah. And so in response to, to both your questions, I guess the other, the other reason I would give for not having additional documentation is, is that I feel it's their choice to simply remain idle at this point. But it may be financial issues, it may be a variety of things. But I can certainly follow it up with some, some updated documentation to state that we still have not received anything, therefore, no construction should commence or continue.
I guess the only follow-up to that is, if you did a stop work order on it, then does, is that easily lifted? If they come back in and they say, hey, here's the architectural plans, we're ready to move forward, is it easily, can you remove that stop work order?
Absolutely.
Or is it a lot of work?
Absolutely.
So how hard is it to go out and find out what they're gonna, what their intent is?
It's just a matter of asking the question, I suppose.
Yeah, it sounds like it's just a money thing. Can't, you know, I, either way, though, either way we go, I don't, I don't care what you do. It's just, seems like a more friendlier way, if you go out and find out if it's a money issue, and do they intend to ever complete it, and, and hopefully they know they have to, they have to conform to our rules.
So, Mr. Chairman, speaking to Mr. Rojas this morning and his daughter, he, Mr. Rojas, said that they're having problems getting an architecture, and the daughter conveyed that to me as well. So I think they feel that they're having issues with, with that. They've also said that they've had some stopping points with the building department. And the only reason I bring that up is because I think they're, they want to be here tonight to speak to you folks. So, you know, maybe you can ask some questions of them also. They, she conveyed to me that she feels like it's just coming to a standstill, and that they can't get anywhere because we're requiring this, and then an architecture won't help, architect won't help them. And so I'm not quite sure what the holdup is. But for a point of clarification, Ed Rojas does own the property. Mick Irvine Properties LLC is the mortgagee, and then Ed leases the building to Northern Dreams.
And they, they're planning on coming during public comment tonight?
That's what they told me tonight. So I invited them, said you're more than welcome to come, because I called to ask them what their operational status was, and what the status was on these violations, and they feel they've hit, hit a roadblock. So I said, well, why don't you come in and talk to the commissioners, and then we'll see what we can figure out.
Do they have to have an architecture ball?
Yes, our, our resolution adopting the International Building Code states, among other thresholds, that anything that provides occupancy for more than ten people is required to have a stamped architect plan for this type of work.
What does that then cost you?
I don't, I'm, I'm not an architect, and so that would be a guess on my part. I, yeah, they don't work for free, that is for certain.
An interesting thing, just as an aside, is that when that was first built, I represented the Urbines when they built it, and it wasn't, it wasn't what it is now, it was a really nice little steak place. And that's how it operated for, for quite a few years, but they, because you said there wasn't a kitchen, but there was a kitchen when it was first built.
Yeah, so they've, they've demoed whatever kitchen may have been in there previously. And so they, they're starting over from a kitchen perspective.
So it's always, no, there wasn't any of that there, and so, well, I, I hope they come in so we can ask them a question directly.
And part of the reason for providing you guys with the information is so you wouldn't be caught flat-footed in your understanding of the situation, so.
And, Mr. Chair, as long as we're discussing this, the Northern Dreams Corporation has been dissolved. So right now, there is not a legal entity.
Mr. Urban passed away, too, two years ago. Mickey Urban passed away of cancer. And his son, I remember the name, Rojas, because they consulted if the Rojas was leasing it and all that, but I have no idea anything further than what I've heard today.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rojas does, in fact, the deed is in his name. It's just Irvine Properties LLC is the mortgagee on that particular piece of property. So the license, the applicant is Rojas doing business as Northern Dreams. And I also informed him and his daughter of the status that, their inactive status through the Secretary of State Business Division. And they relayed to me, they thought that, they had that cleared up, but as of Friday...
Yesterday.
Yesterday, as of yesterday, we have no record that that has been the case.
So I guess the question on that, then, is, so is that license essentially parked at the moment, not being used?
No, it would be up to, well, I won't speak for Charmaine. I'll let you talk to that. Well, I guess, we don't know exactly what they're doing with it, but I'll let you say more.
At the renew, the renewal application indicates that they are still operational, per the renewal application. When I spoke to them on the phone today, they are not operating. So this license, this particular license is slated to expire November, or March thirty-first. So this is the process that we're doing today to either renew these licenses or not.
Mr. Chairman.
Peter, I was going to, go ahead.
You, no, please.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna, it's, it's been a while since I've looked at the liquor license laws for operational versus non-operational, and when they're parked. And I, I kind of remember how long they can be parked, and that there was some changes to that, and this dealt with some, a city license in particular. But if we have actual knowledge that they're not operating, can we renew? I suppose that's my baseline question.
Go ahead. So a license can be non-operational under certain circumstances for one year?
So do we know how long they've been non-operational? I know you said June of last year, but...
The letter I've got that code enforcement submitted prior to my first conversation with Mr. Rojas is dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. That one was submitted by Tiffany Hyde, and then that was followed up on June sixteenth of twenty twenty-two by Lori Hall. June sixteenth is the first day that I spoke with Mr. Rojas.
I'm not too sure that would start running until they come in and want to renew the license.
That's correct. So, Mr. Chairman, speaking with the liquor division, if they were to renew the application as non-operational, it is not statute that they would have to provide a written affidavit, you know, requesting non-operational status. However, the liquor division likes that to happen. And if they were to do that, that would be when the clock would, in a sense, start ticking for, for the parked or non-operational status. He also indicated to me, the liquor division indicated to me, that they have not ordered any liquor since November of twenty twenty. However, that may not mean that they haven't operated, because they can buy beer and wine, and they can also buy up to nine liters of alcohol per week. So, you know, that's not really an indicator whether they've been non-operational since that time.
Did they have a fire out there or something?
No, I believe this remodel was simply to, to add some, to, to update the place. I was told on one occasion that the, the point of the addition was to support packaged liquor sales.
They don't need a architect, though, for a pole, do they? Forget, forget that question.
No, again, my, my greatest concern was, of course, since this is an assembly occupancy that they had changed, they deleted one of the exit doors and moved some other things around in a fashion that, unfortunately, we can't cross the line as the building department in terms of providing that type of design. They've got to provide a plan, and the, and the one plan that they did attempt to submit just did not have enough detail. And rather than, rather than just perpetuating that, I simply said, look, you, you need to hire an architect. That's what the, that's what the code states, and I'm just going to have to stick to that.
Can they just put it back the way it was and then not have to do that? I'm just curious.
I'm not even sure that's possible at this point. They, they, they'd done finish work. They have drywall taped and mudded. It's, it's not like they started the demo and then got caught, they were significantly far along.
Well, as far as the liquor license goes, I know that we have dealt one with one in the past, and they went five years of being parked and nothing being done, until they were finally told, you will put that in operational. And then they went to a, to the location of where it was, which was basically an abandoned building, and did the minimum, twenty-five hundred dollars, I think it was, of Alcohol to State Liquor Authority, and put it in there and were operational for like twenty minutes a day. It never sold a drop out of it, but they were operational, so.
I know the exact place you're talking about. Now the building's torn down.
Now the building's torn down, and the license has been transferred to somebody else, or sold to somebody else, but... So I think it would only be fair to ask them exactly what their plan is moving forward. I don't really want to see a license go to be in park, because it doesn't do anybody any good being parked. But maybe hear them out, see what they have to do, and, or what their plans are, and, and what the plan is with the license itself, and go from there, that's my thought.
It's reasonable thought.
Yeah. Okay. Are you going to be around tonight, or? Or will you come to tell us that so you can go home?
Well, as I had mentioned this morning, the Evansville Planning and Zoning Commission is meeting tonight on a, a change that they're making, and we do serve as their building department via an MOU. And so I was going, I was planning to attend their meeting so that I could answer any questions they need. But now I feel like it's probably more important that I attend this meeting in case any questions or rebuttals are necessary.
You're good. We'll listen to what they have to say tonight, what their plan is, and then if we need to do a follow-up with them, we can certainly make a, an appointment outside of here to sit down with them, too, so.
Okay.
Enjoy your other meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm guessing an architect fee is at least five grand, isn't it, probably?
Yeah, depends on how extensive it is.
Justin says yes. Okay, anything else we need to take care of before we go to executive session?
I suppose, Mr. Chairman, and I had talked with Charmaine briefly. We have a bill from Davis and Cannon, their attorneys. They represented the assessor at some BOE hearings last November. It's a twenty thousand dollar bill, and my only question was whether this should actually be, instead of to the Nitrana County Clerk's Office, to the Nitrana County Assessor's Office. So just was asking for...
Who hired him?
The assessor's attorney.
In, in the past, we have been the one that have paid that bill, so.
So the warrants are issued out of my office.
Did we have any say in it? Well, we did, we, we'll get to go there, tell the assessor, we were going to cover it.
Let me see that bill there.
So, Mr. Chairman, we did allow, we created a new line item in the assessor's budget to this current fiscal for legal fees. So I think it would be appropriate to take it out of that line item.
Yeah, we, that was one of the things that we, that we voted on, to have it a clean separation for the assessor this last year, is to make sure that we, originally, we were, we were talking about having the assessor pay for it, and then we changed, and we decided that we would put it in a line item to get that taken care of, so.
And, Mr. Chair, I, I forgot one thing that, that I asked to be on the work session, and that's in your work session packet, there's the resolution establishing a process to purchase county-owned real property. And right now, there is no process really. So this is a, a draft.
Did you look at this bill, Peter? Does it, does it make sense to you? Okay, yeah, thank you. I just can't, I, I can't read it, I don't, I don't do billings like that myself.
Mr. Chairman, Charmaine, is this, was, was this what you had provided to Eric last fall, that was provided to the commissioners at some point last fall?
Yes, it is.
I had some red lines, and some, some thoughts, and some concerns about it, and I am not, I don't have those fresh in my mind. I'd, I'd like to go back to my office and grab it at, at some point, but, so I don't, I don't have any direct comment today on it.
Okay, and, Mr. Chair, and that'll be great, and that's, we just want to get it started, a, a starting point to get something in place. And so I'm, I'm really soliciting comments either now or via email when you get a chance to look at it.
Okay. All right. So then we need to move to executive session, do we?
It's just twenty thousand bucks, it's due now.
Anybody want to make that motion?
Make a motion that we move into executive session.
Motion moved by Commissioner North, second by Commissioner Laird, going to executive session. Any discussion?
Personnel and legal updates. Yeah, property acquisitions are legal updates.
Mr. Chair, if you say both personnel and legal updates, that'll cover both of us.
So for the purpose of personnel, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, personnel and legal updates is what I'm making a motion on.
Yes. And, and it's legal, legal advice, so.
All right, so a motion's been made by Commissioner North, second by Commissioner Laird. Any further discussion? Laird. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we're in the executive session then.